Good evening. I'd like to call the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee into open session for Wednesday, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty-two P. M. First on the agenda is public comments. We have no one in the public to comment, so we'll move to action on minutes. We need to have action on the open meeting minutes of October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any questions or comments or revisions from the committee? Nope, seen none. I need a motion to accept. Joan?
I move to accept the open meeting minutes of October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two as stated.
And a second?
Second.
Kathy Keat? And all in favor? No oppose? No extensions? That passes. Action on the executive session minutes of October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two? No comments? I think those, we need a motion to hold those, retain them until they're made. Paul, anyone a second?
Second.
Second.
Kathleen? And so, all in favor? Okay. That brings us to educational policy at this time, but we'll have some soon.
Correct.
And new business.
So, I did place, at your table, a letter that we will be sending out to our legislative delegation regarding the fourteen percent increase in class worth out of district placements. We did calculate the impact to the district will be about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars just for grades nine through twelve. So, this will go out tomorrow, and I will have the chair sign the letter. And school committees and superintendents across the Commonwealth will be sending similar letters, and hopefully we'll get some movement in terms of reducing the rate increase to amount that we can actually afford.
Questions on that?
Is this just going to Teldrick?
No, it's also going to Senator Chandler, I believe, too, and we are going to send this to our new legislative delegation folks. But I believe that they are sworn in the first of the year, so.
Pretty sure that Dykema still has people.
Okay, so send it to her. We had multiple letters. I just provided one.
This is, it's a significant increase, and then on top of it, we're going to be competing with these entities for staffing. They're going to be potentially providing signing bonuses, which schools don't do, you know, and that's part of the increase that's going in there. And it'll affect, you know, potentially, does Circuit Breaker have enough money in it to then reimburse us these costs? There's a lot of questions.
Yeah, and I don't, we did ask if Circuit Breaker would help reduce this percent increase, and the answer was no. And I think the hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase just to the district, the regional school, doesn't take into account the pre-K through eight Northborough increase and Southborough increase. So, the overall increase is probably a little under a million dollars across our communities.
I think as Kathleen said last time, like talking to legislatures is important on this issue.
It's addictive.
Yeah. Any other questions? That brings us to Fine Arts and Performing Arts Department presentation.
Sure. I'll turn it over to Principal Batten, who will.
Sure. Before I actually introduce our speaker, I'd like to introduce our stand-in student representative tonight, Amelia Sinclair, who's a sophomore and a wonderful student, and participates in a lot of different roles in our school. And so, she's joining us tonight. Ben could not make it, and she's a member of the Student Advisory Council. And this is her first meeting. She's nervous. I told her not to be nervous. So, she's excited to be here. So, we, I invite Amy Collins, Department Chair of the Fine and Performing Arts, to join us here. And so, she'll be presenting, and there is a little bit of audio, but really you should move so you can see it, and everyone will be able to hear it.
And thank you very much for the tickets.
Yes, thank you.
Open to come tonight?
Yes.
Do you have an Apple TV?
Yes.
We did a dry run earlier, and it worked, so.
Thank you for having me here tonight. It's always a pleasure to come and share what's going on in our very active and busy department. So, I'm here to talk about art, drama, and music. First, we'd like to introduce the team and thank the team of our seven educators in art, drama, and music. They're all doing a fantastic job, working with all of our students and bringing their energy and enthusiasm and passion for the arts and working with our fine students. They had to adapt and be very flexible over the past couple of years, and we're very happy to be back, working for students in our more typical and traditional fashion this year. The philosophy of our department is really heavily tied to the portrait of the graduate, especially right now, a big focus is a healthy and balanced course load for our students and giving the students an opportunity to find themselves through the arts. We find that students benefit greatly from studying the arts. They can develop self-esteem, self-discipline, resiliency, perseverance. And obviously, it's a great avenue for students to express themselves and understand and connect their emotions and thoughts and feelings through their creative energy. We feel it's a great source of enjoyment, and it can significantly enhance students' school life and their life beyond school. Here's a look at our current visual arts offerings. We have a wide breadth of offerings here, drawing, painting, photography, digital media, ceramics, a newer class called Mixed Media, and an art gallery class. We have various levels for the beginners, all the way up to AP where students can work on their portfolio for college. Digital photojournalism, I just highlighted a couple of the classes, has been really active recently. You may see some of the art around us. Behind us is some of our digital photojournalism. They're connecting and working a lot right now with Harbinger and documenting what's going on in school and sharing that with our community. So, it's a great connection with our award-winning Harbinger. The art gallery class, we have our own gallery up in the C-two-hundred corridor, and students right now, they just started, fresh this year, a new course of students, and they have opened it up this year. They're creating in December, I believe, an opportunity for anyone in the school to present art in that gallery. They had an evening workshop, a call of artists, and the themes connections that was brought to us by the students, and that was their desire to do that. So, that's going really well, so you might hear some more about that in December. Our newest class is the Mixed Media class. I believe that started two years ago, and that's working with some alternative materials. I'm going to show you a quick video of one of the pieces that students are working on. So, they're using alternative materials, collaging, embroidery. This is an environment design that a student completed last year, so it's a real, really hands-on class and really good class for students of all different levels. There's not that pressure that I can't draw. This is they're taking different materials, and they can build and create in different ways. And I love this particular piece that the student did. This was in the art show last year. This class will run second semester this year, so. The lights, I like the lights. This is just some artwork to share with you from the varying levels. That's a white chalk pastel from an Art One class, a Zen doodle self-portrait from Art Two. And then, those are some of our AP self-portraits done with acrylic paint. That's a great picture of an art class done by a student in digital photojournalism for the Harbinger. A great poster, parents out there might connect with that or not, of the graphic design class, a ceramics piece, and a digital art self-portrait, all done in our computer lab up in the art hallway. New this year that I wanted to share, we've always had our National Art Honor Society, but this year they received a grant from the Northborough Ed Foundation to create a unified art project to enhance the ability for students to work of all abilities. This is an after-school program. It's connected with Student Support Services. And they are, their goal is to beautify the school and bring more artwork. We have great artwork around the building, but even more, maybe in some offices as well. So, this is, they've had two sessions so far. It was really well-attended in some partnerships between students and Student Support Services and our art students working together to create art after school. So, we're hoping this project grows and gives a chance for more students to make art and to promote some inclusion in our program. You may have recalled last year that we had a student receive Best in Show at the Congressional Art Show hosted by Congressman McGovern. That's Devon Bullard. She was a sophomore last year, a junior this year. Her artwork is right now in the Capitol Building down in D.C., and she went over the summer with her family down there and got to see it hanging there, which is pretty great. Shifting over to our performing arts offerings, so our music and drama classes. This is our courses that allow students to create, perform, respond, connect, collaborate within the school, and bring their performances to the community. A big shift in our performing ensembles this year, actually, it was last year we had to make this shift. We're feeling, as I'm sure you can imagine, the impact of COVID and how that impacted our performing ensembles. We had a great deal of restrictions placed on us, so we're feeling that effect coming up, and I think we'll feel it for a couple of years because we have a strong feeder program, and they've been impacted, how they're coming up. So, last year, we were looking at the numbers, and we decided it was in our best interest to no longer have the ninth-grade-only instrumental and ninth-grade-only chorus groups because we weren't finding, we had the amount of students to feel comfortable performing in a smaller venue. So, we've absorbed those groups into our older groups, like our tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade groups. So, that's been a shift for us. It's been successful. Students feel more comfortable playing with more people than, you know, individually. I hope this is not a forever thing because it was nice having those ninth graders have their, find their way, Northborough and Southborough coming together and working together. But it's something we'll have to keep an eye on and look at. So, that's been a change for us. Another change for us is the introduction of other types of classes that we're not relying on our feeder program, like our American pop music class, American pop music from Billie Holiday to Billie Eilish, where students are talking about music from late, I guess, eighteenth century all the way up to present day, how it relates to society and culture, listening to music, discussing music, and really exploring music in that way versus performing music. That's been an exciting concept for us. So, this is a little look back in time to talk about what I was mentioning, about the changes we've experienced. So, you can see in here, this is what we looked like in the performing arts two years ago at this time. Rehearsals were outside, ten feet apart, then inside, still ten feet apart, in hybrid. That's, we did our cabaret virtually. We learned a lot of audio editing and that stuff during that time. So, that's, the experience definitely shifted during that time. And I know COVID impacted all of our curriculum throughout the school and in the community in different ways, but I feel like it really impacted us without having performances, live performances, the ability to perform for somebody or dealing with wind and, you know, the elements outside. Like, it was just, someday, I think we'll look back at it and laugh, but it's still, it's a little like. But we are, we are still feeling it, and that's not unique to Algonquin at all. This is happening throughout the country for music programs, performing programs because we did really feel that, that impact. So, I'm hopeful that we are moving forward and having success, but this has been a big part of the changes we've experienced here. This is here. Here's now. This is a snapshot of orchestra rehearsal. We did just have a very successful fall concert. This is us really trying to work on listening to each other again. That's a concept, and communicating with each other again, trusting each other in an ensemble, working together. That's something that when you're ten feet apart or not having a concert fair for it, that shifted for us a lot. So, we're trying to come back together, communicate with each other, trust, work as a team. It's going well. But it's, it's something we really are focusing on right now. Successes in that we're back to having jazz festivals. That's a nice snapshot of, we hosted the MAJ Jazz Festival, left guest clinicians coming in. The Jazz One Group and Jazz Two did very successfully at that. And then, we were able to bring back guest artists. That's a picture of James Burton. He's the director of the Tanglewood Festival Chorus, and he teaches orchestra and chorus at Boston University. He's come in and worked with our group. So, we're back doing those things and getting kids really excited about what they're doing and performing. So, that's, that's been wonderful. But it's, we're working on that road still. I would have ten feet apart from each other outside, back to, back to this a little more. Same thing for drama. We felt the impact there without having the same typical experience we're used to, but making a lot of headway coming back from that. We had a great production of Suzical last year and Radium Girls when we hosted the Drama Festival. That's a snapshot of using the space in the black box and working on scenes and monologues. So, we're back doing those things, and it's, it's going well. Yes, you have tickets. Tomorrow, Guys and Dolls opens. We're really, really excited about that. There's some pictures of the students in rehearsal. They're in their final rehearsal right now. I just took a peek when I was walking down here, and it's going really well, and there's a lot of excitement about it. So, we're happy to have these things back. The students are really happy to have these things back in their lives and as part of the school community. So, this is a little bit of some publicity we're doing. You may have seen the beat. This is, I'm excited to be here to talk to you about the program, but we want to talk about it a lot to lots of people. We want to generate a lot of interest in the arts again and pull more students in. We all love what we do and the chance to work with students. We want to work with more of them. So, we're doing a lot of our own publicity. This is just one piece of it. We've been doing this for a while now, in Arts Week, where we have students performing at lunch to draw in the interest and give them the opportunity to perform for their peers and in the school. We had an I create, I perform project that students could do at lunch, where they talk about why they create, why they perform, and why it's important to them. We've initiated the beat. Greg's been wonderful in sharing that out to the district, hoping to reach our younger families in the community and letting them know, because we're so reliant on our feeder program, especially in music, that we want the students to start young, so we have them when they come back up here. So, that's been an initiative we've started in trying to reach more people and talk about what we do here. So, that's, that's it. Again, thank you for letting me be here to talk to you about the arts. It's a great opportunity to spread the good word about what we're doing, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you so much. It's impressive to see where we've come in the last couple of years. I'm sure people on the committee want to have comments or questions? Surprised.
Yeah, I'm really surprised. I'm sure, I was feeling the eye contact. To have tabla, to have a tabla performer is just so exciting, so unique, so different, so culturally appropriate. Jeanette Morgan was telling me about it. I was just over the moon to hear that. I also was at the concert, and when you look, how old is the saxophone player?
He is a sophomore.
And the bass player?
Sophomore.
I look at the sophistication of improvisation and improvising with their teacher and being seen doing that, sharing that. The level of jazz that I heard at this last concert was so much higher. The integration into the wind ensemble was fantastic fun, really creative to bring in those elements. I look at that level of competency that young, and it's just so mind-boggling. And what can we do as a committee in support of the feeder program, if anything?
Well, I think education to younger families in the community about what we do is really big. Like I said, the opportunity to come here and speak to you tonight is great, and this publication, I hope, is reaching more people. I hope more opportunities across, across the district to collaborate with music teachers and perhaps bring the high school groups down to the elementary schools or the elementary groups up here is really important. It's something we've had to navigate away from for a little bit with COVID, and, but I think that's something we can bring back now. I mean, I remember myself personally, when I was in elementary school, when I heard the older students, or if I went to a BS of a concert, that's what inspired me to want to do it. So, I think the more things we can do like that and make that possible would be much appreciated.
So, quite a few years ago, before I came on school committee, the superintendent had a series, and I did a talk on music. And maybe it's, I am more than happy to do something like that again with my, in, use that platform. If there's any opportunity to be of service, I'd be happy to, for no money. Everybody else, big money, no money here. But I also would like to say, too, that I agree with the heavy lifting that you all did that was unique within this department. I was outside when you all lugged out the vibraphones or the xylophone, the drums, lugging all that stuff out, lugging the chairs. That's what I've seen the teachers do, and then I watched all the stands blow over, and my own daughter's stand, and the music just went flying. It was inconceivable to me that you persevered, and I really want to congratulate you and offer my deep appreciation. That was heavy lifting then, and music educators were always heavy lifting. How many chairs do you put out in a day, Ms. Collins?
Too many to count.
I know. How many instruments do you move? I mean, I get that, and, and yet, through this period, it was above and beyond. So, I really offer you my deepest gratitude and acknowledgement of that.
Do they still do the all, was it all town?
All town.
Where, where all the, the elementary, the middle, and high school?
So, in Northborough, yes, they're doing the all-town game. Yes.
That really made an impact. I remember my sons, when they got to see, like, where they could go. I mean, because oftentimes, kids come here and watch basketball and see where they could go, and to see that all together in one soup was,
Yeah, and we've done the.
I can imagine quite a challenge to coordinate, but it was.
Yes, yes, it is. We've done the bandorama, a stringorama, and a singorama, where it's a five through twelve or three through twelve, depending on the program. One-hour event snapshot of the curriculum. The last one we did was two thousand nineteen. It's probably time to bring it back and do that sort of thing. It's a heavy lift, yes, in coordination, but it is very effective.
I was going to ask the same thing. I remember that, too. It's up there, and my kids, I don't know, fourth grade or something, when they had, you know, all the programs there. And I remember distinctly, this one kid from the high school, who was in the orchestra, I think, was also a football player. He got up and spoke about how, yes, it's possible to be a football player and be in the orchestra.
Yes.
And it was, it was just really compelling.
So, it sounds like it's time to bring that back.
But also, thinking not such a heavy lift, is these dress rehearsals, you could have them and have the younger kids come see that, which is just as effective and not as all-encompassing, right? Like, it's a great day for them. Keith would have to arrange transportation. Yeah, and it's just exciting for them.
It is. We welcome that sort of thing again, logistically with busing and scheduling of lunches and time on learning in Right. elementary and middle school. We do meet some challenges with coordinating that, which we could use some support and figuring out.
But they're still learning.
Yes.
I don't want to leave out also, thank you for bringing in, displaying all this artwork. I mean, it's, it's remarkable, and it does add quite a bit to the, to the school and makes the school, you know, gives the kids ownership of the school, too, and how it's placed throughout. It's just, it's remarkable.
My one other, this is all phenomenal, too, and I couldn't agree with everything that's been said. It's great. I love our program here. It's, it's just so worldly, right? My only comment and food for thought would be these electives like Art One or Mixed Media or others that are like CP and honors, and I'm wondering why. Why aren't they just one level, and why do we have to have two levels of like an introductory art?
So, the philosophy behind that, when we started that a number of years ago, was that we, we wanted the CP and honors, so they're heterogeneously mixed. So, they're, they're. that we wanted the CP and honors. So they're heterogeneously mixed. So they're in class together, it's not separate sections. Is that we didn't want a student not to take an art class because they were fearful of failure. And that that would impact their grade in a negative way. Because we were hearing from students that that was, they want to explore this talent, but they're nervous about the repercussions of it. And we have students who are working through the prerequisites of Art One to Art Two to AP, that they are feeling comfortable in their talents and their skills and want to take it in more advanced levels. So they take it at the honors. So that's why we've done that.
Well, that makes me feel better that they're, if they're in the class together and not separate, like this is CP art and this is honors art, you know, that's, okay.
But it is.
Good.
Kathleen?
So one of the things that we didn't talk about a lot, because the performing portion of the program is so incredible, but my kids, a million years ago, really benefited. And I don't want to under, I don't want to overestimate the value of the public speaking and the drama curriculum classes, because my kids both took them. And I would tell you, before they came to Algonquin, I'll bet you a million dollars, they're never on that stage. And both of them were on that stage repeatedly because of, I think, just the confidence, the teachers, the way the curriculum is structured, and the break from the monotonous other, you know, academic kind of classes. So they're just so incredibly valuable. And when my second son was a senior, he got some award and he had to, you know, sort of make a speech. But he was one of like five kids who got the award. Every other kid up there, from different schools, not here, reading, just reading there. And my kid was up there just with notes and just like publicly speaking off the top of his head. And it is a direct result of all the classes that he took and all the experiences that he got. So question. And I noticed COVID and probably COVID-related. So we used to have things like, you know, lip sync competitions and, and what was it, like Algonquin Idol, things like that. Had those all gone by the wayside because of COVID or?
So those are more based on steering committees. Those are fundraisers outside of the Fine Performing Arts Department that a steering committee would take on as a fundraiser and host. So that's really, I want to say.
Where's Ben? Bring Ben back. Take notes.
Is it Ben Chanzer?
I don't know.
The musical. But I want to say, and I could be speaking out of turn, that there was less interest and those stopped happening because it wasn't coming together. But it is separate from the Fine Performing Arts, but the Fine Performing Arts kids really liked doing those things. It was their wheelhouse.
Yeah. No, it just, everybody enjoyed it, including the students that were just in attendance. And so.
Battle of the Bands was another one that happened quite a bit that steering committees would take on. And they have kind of fizzles.
Okay. Well, it'd be great to see those come back because I think that they are valuable to a certain subset of kids that aren't necessarily going to get up there and audition for a play.
I agree.
I do have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry. In honor of Paul Bucka, do you have all the money you need?
So we did receive a cut that we could benefit from having returned to us, and that was around transportation. We travel quite a bit with our groups. Some of it's required, some of it's not. With our music groups, we attend as part of our curricular ensemble classes, adjudicated performance of MICA festival that requires transportation, which is not funded right now. That transportation fund was also utilized in a beneficial way to us to go and perform in the community. Prates, festivals, go to the elementary school, middle school, Senior Center, Veterans Day at the Senior Center in Northborough. So we have felt the impact of not being able to do those things financially. An eye is on the numbers right now as well, as we're looking at course enrollments, particularly in drama. We received a reduction there. It's adequate right now as far as our course offerings and selections of numbers coming in. But hopefully, as we are rebuilding, continue to rebuild, that if those numbers build back up, we would be looking to enhance that position.
I swore that as the daughter of accountants, I would stay away from ledgers, but I'll start doing that work more and more and more.
Paul?
I just had a question. Have we ever had bands playing at sporting events? Or would we ever?
Yes, we, back to 2019, we had a pep band performing at a football game and at a couple of hockey games and a basketball game. That went away. Obviously, we're 2020. Now, we haven't rebuilt enough to have it come back and perform. We are going to play at the pep rally on the day before Thanksgiving. So it's getting there. We're coming back a little at a time and rebuilding. So students are excited for that. That could be something that moves back in that direction.
Good. Glad to hear that.
Cool. Anything else?
So I just want to thank Amy for her leadership. And just want to reemphasize that the district is committed to the fine and performing arts and we too have a commitment to making sure that our youngest learners are really interested in music and the fine and performing arts. And it's really important in terms of our strategic plan and the portrait of a graduate. And I know you've been working really hard, working with your colleagues in Northborough and Southborough, and I just want to thank you for that. And the other thing I just want to applaud our fine and performing arts educators around is just their instructional practice, often goes unnoticed. But their instruction around authentic performances and the way they're developing skill and engaging the learner in really being an authentic task is something that I think all departments can learn from and all teachers can learn from. We had the opportunity to actually observe one of our music educators, not at Algonquin, but in Northborough, teach instruction orchestra. And it was just amazing. So the skill, the attention, the engagement of the students. So I just want to emphasize that and thank you and on behalf of the Central Office and the district.
Thank you.
And if I can add on to Amy, who is a wonderful colleague here, is a leader in the building, but I also will voice, run voice to what you're saying here, Mr. Martino, and add on to the fact that our music educators in particular have really been leaders in the building in exploring diverse artists and to use their performance as an opportunity to share with our community artists we may not have ever heard of before. And then also to, in the program, to teach us all about that. So it's not only that I go to these events and enjoy the music, which I do. I always leave there learning something about an artist or a musician or a composer that I hadn't known before that is representative of a, maybe a marginalized group that five, 10, 15 years ago probably was not featured in American public fine and performing arts performances. So that's really something we should be very proud of. And I think the result of Amy's leadership, but also really the wonderful work the teachers in there do, Olivia and Eric in particular.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the ticket.
Enjoy them.
The next item, it looks like Ben's been hard at work in gathering more donations.
Yes.
So there's a donation from Central One Federal Credit Union in the amount of $300 for the Student Council. So we'd need a motion to accept that.
So who?
Kathleen?
Second.
Second. Karen. All in favor? Any opposed? None abstained? Okay. That motion carries. That brings us to the superintendent's report to the committee.
And I will turn it over to Principal Evan, who will provide the principal's report.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, and good evening. I will, we're going to have a few different people join us today. So we have Kathy Carmen Yarney, who is one of our three assistant principals, as well as Andy McGowan, who's joining us. So we're each going to pick up a few different pieces here and share a variety of updates. But we're going to start with, so I just want to make sure I'm presenting here.
Yeah, sorry.
There's no music. Only a few photographs, but it's mostly bar charts and other things.
Now you're talking. That's my language.
Okay. So here we, so.
Maybe you can help me read these things.
All right. So I'm just standing here. So I've asked Kathleen to present an overview of our class size ratios. And she, among other things in our, on our leadership team, does the master scheduling and has a real good command of how the master schedule plays into how our classes are staffed and how many kids are in them. So she's going to just do a brief overview of what that looks like. So, I think.
Sure. Great. So I have for you, just a kind of, you can see the class sizes by department. It stretches from one all the way to 25 plus in a class. Keep in mind that some of those classes, like Amy was saying, may be a combined class. So I just put them together as a class. So as you can see, Fine and Performing Arts has, you know, about 30 or so classes that are from one to 10. So that's where we're seeing that decrease. But we're hoping that'll pick right up. I have the math of all the different class averages right there. You can see the band. We're starting to really shift and really make priorities to try to get a little bit lower in class sizes, especially, you know, we looked at our, we looked at our master schedule this year and we really focused on, you know, where are the kids that are going to need the most support? And we made sure to make those the lower classes. So we have a lower teacher, student to teacher ratio in those classes. So does anyone have any questions?
I'm looking there at the map.
Yep.
And we have 25 plus, the orange.
Sure.
What classes are those that have 25 plus? And what is the highest number of students in that class?
Yep, I've got those for you. I have two classes that are Geometry Honors. Those are sophomores. They're at 25. And we have one class of our AP Calculus AB. We only had one section of it and it was 25 students. So that's where that is. The applied, let me see, I know that the Fine and Performing Arts, you have two ensembles that are there as well as you have the public speaking. We have three courses of public speaking, all about 30, but those are actually co-taught by two teachers. So we allow it to get to like 40. So they each have like 20.
So just to speak to that, and Kathy does a really wonderful job of helping to navigate this, when you have a class of, let's say, 51 enrollments in a course, that's a very difficult number to manage because two sections is, or two very large sections, three sections is three relatively small sections. And that section pulls from somewhere else where the staffing might be better utilized. So sometimes you get to these tough breaks of the number of kids enrolled in a class. And 52 is one of the worst to try to manage. And that's an example of that precisely. What I see in here is, in some of our departments, you see a generally healthy balance. Like in English, you see classes right in the middle, you have a good chunk of classes that are at 16 to 20, which feels really healthy. Some classes that are a little bit bigger, but not unhealthily bigger. And not so many classes that are small, that feel like they're too small. Kids don't necessarily want to be in a class that's too small, where there aren't that many others of their friends to socialize with or to manage a conversation in. And we also want to be mindful of our commitment to the taxpayer to make sure we're staffing appropriately. So I see, like in English and science, that the way those bands kind of lay out feel appropriate to me. I feel like, you know, our staffing is adequate and needs certainly no additions. And what we are seeing is captured in this blue box in the bottom, is that where our staffing is adequate and some of our course enrollments might be on the lower side, it does give us the opportunity to run high-interest elective courses that might not have been able to run when we were a little bit more tightly staffed. So for example, running a course in PE, that's an elective on weight training, that has enrolled nicely. And we have one on ancient healers. That's a new course this year and has filled. So one of the things we're excited about is that whereas our staffing is healthy, we're able to now, I think, bring up our elective program, which has been, is a real strength of ours, if you're not aware. I think you probably are as leaders in our community. The elective program at Algonquin is better than anywhere I've ever seen. I mean, it's really why remarkable the kind of experience a kid can, a student can come through our school and have.
Another follow-up. Is there a set number of students that enroll in a class on a new one, class selection? And is there any kind of students that are turned away from taking class in, let's say, an honors class or a CP, because there's too many students and they have to take another option? Has that ever happened? Like, do you cap off class sizes when they're selecting courses?
We cap off in the sense that we know that we want about 24. Like, we won't, we try to get our honors classes never to go above 24. We try to keep our CP classes at 22, our, maybe our fundamentals classes at 15 to 18. So those are our caps. And the way we do the scheduling is that we look at what's coming at us for requests. And they're all teacher-driven recommendations. So we look at what's there and then we make the schedule based on those requests. There can be a toss-up here and there, but maybe more for the electives. But, you know, we try to make sure, I think that's why you see those Geometry Honors numbers a little bit higher, because that was where we were just a bit over, that if we, if we made one more class of it, it was going to take away from us, from another area. So if we kept a couple at 24, 25, we were okay to do that. So that's kind of where we balance that off on.
Are there any yearly trends that you see? Is it always like, let's say, it's always the Geometry Honors, they always have it? Because we go into the faculty season, we see our whole course and with administration and sort of kind of working on, you know, hiring teachers and what we're looking for in the next one. So is there a trend that always seems to be happening? If we had the right budget and we had, you know, the money to do it, we could hire another teacher for another course?
So I, maybe, do you mind? I would say that the trend really is, and to speak to Amy, who I don't know if she's still here, that we're seeing enrollments, as you know, our enrollment in our school, our student body population is dropping, and the enrollments in the Fine and Performing Arts are dropping, and that's become a challenge. So we are, we have enough staffing and we have enough budget to staff those, but sometimes we don't have enough students to fill them in a really healthy way. And so where, when Amy talked about public speaking being reduced, that was reduced, but it was also reduced because we didn't have the enrollment numbers to fill the other two sections that were formerly afforded to that position. So that was not, that was a cut based on what was responsible to do. And you can't have a public speaking class when you only have a handful of kids in there. So that, the enrollments drove that as a reduction. And adding more FTE to that doesn't mean kids enroll in it. So we're looking now at what are the drivers to why students are, you know, aren't enrolling in as high percentages as they have in the past in the Fine and Performing Arts. This is not the only place, the only school where this is happening. I think what we've all seen as adults in the last 10, 12, 15 years is a greater push in the world for STEM. And STEM can be hard to compete with for a community like ours where families want, if they have an elective offering and space in their child's schedule, sometimes they're encouraging their child to take it in an area that might look, to their perspective or to their opinion, as more rigorous on a college application. And that sometimes comes away from the Fine and Performing Arts. So we're looking at ways to make sure our Fine and Performing Arts program is fully supported. And that's going to take some examination to make sure, you know, we're doing, our requirements are built to ensure that that's the case.
Thanks very much.
Yeah.
I will also say, Jen, like this is the first year that I did the master schedule fully. So I don't have that breadth of tread data. You know, I can look at data, but I think I'll really be able to see it at the end of next year.
I'll ask the same question.
I'll be ready.
So question then, following up on that, Applied Arts, 25 plus, do you know what that class is, the orange? I'm wondering what that would be.
I think it's.
Give me a minute. No, I mean, I'm just saying, like, I'm just curious. And given all the electives, right, to Joan's point, they, there's a trade-off, right? It's like, they have all these electives, but they're not, you can't fill them all. It's like, they have all these electives, but they're now, you can't fill them all, right? They're not always going to run and so you can't possibly have that all.
That's right, yeah, yeah. They, the same, kids are going to go somewhere, they're going to be sitting somewhere and we want the students to have that choice to go where they want to go and feel like they're in a class that they're excited to take.
I think to Amy's credit and her department's credit, the one thing that I really did see is that in the fine and performing arts, especially the arts area, they did whatever they could to keep kids in those programs. They have cla, they have, I have teachers teaching seven plus preps in a day, you know, because they're teaching three different levels within the same program to make sure that those kids are receiving every possibility they can receive.
My, just observation and question, or I don't know, you know, it's on the other end and looking for efficiencies. Like, there seem to be quite a number and maybe it's because of directed support in like MCAS or something. But math, you know, there's, there's, seems like quite a few sections in math and in applied arts. And then a strange one in world language with less than, you know, 10 or less, that, that's a very, very small ratio, even 15 under, you know, when looking for efficiencies and trying to maximize things. It's just interesting. Like I said, maybe the math part is because of MCAS and there's more focused parts earlier, but.
Yep, we have some, like, some of our RISE program, we have, two of those classes are our RISE classes.
Got it.
So that kind of factors in there as well.
So there's students who need the most amount of support, so we keep the class sizes very low and less than 10. Typically, we don't prefer to run classes, you know, in small digits, sometimes it's most beneficial.
I think that's important for, you know, like, to make sure we're letting the public know and not just.
That 11 to 15 band two in the math is, this year we've really looked at, you know, the coming up from the middle school. They, we heard from them that they're really having those gaps. And we wanted to make sure that those Algebra I CP classes were as small as they could be, where we normally run them at 20. I've been in some that are 14, 15, so they're really receiving that individualized attention that they need.
Just to speak to this, um, smaller class sizes, it really does benefit the students in some ways. It might not always appear that way, but in certain settings, I'm in a fine arts class currently and it's less than 10 kids. And we've all grown really close and it's just a, and we get a lot done in that class because we have the time where the teacher can dedicate her attention to us. And it's just overall a very beneficial class. And I know the teacher thinks very highly of having such a small class size because since it is a fine and performing arts class, we can have the time to get all our projects done.
Thank you.
So I'll just add a couple.
Well, I just would say, I feel like, I mean, when I started doing it 14 years ago, I had the same alarming question. Like, why do we have so many classes that are so small? And the answer is the same. And I don't think the, you know, sort of demographics of students have changed. It's just in the way that we've done it and it's incredibly effective. And so it's not a change and it's not something that we can, you know, get efficiencies out of. It's, it's a requirement and it's, it's our well-being.
Yeah, and I think it's a benefit to our students that we've, you know, we've chosen to take some of our students in our TLC population and provide them the opportunity to be, you know, they go out of that placement and go into like a regular math class. And so to be able to have that and have that chance to pass that MCAS is a great, is a great thing for our students.
And I will add before, if we're ready to move on, but that we were in, when we've been looking at the forthcoming enrollment numbers in the last several years, we forecasted knew that our enrollments were dropping. And so when we had retirements, that it didn't look like we needed that staffing two, three, four years after, after that retirement, that we needed to really start thinking about having class sizes maybe be a little bit big for a short period of time and then settle into a, into a class size that's fine. And math is about that, for example. So we did not hire in behind a retired math teacher two years ago and that those numbers were on the higher sides. There was more green on that bar, maybe there was another, a little bit more orange. And so this year you're starting to see that regress back to a healthier norm. And we won't have to riff a teacher that we didn't need because we felt like we had to hire them two years ago because we were forecasting this as a, as the data suggested where we'd be.
Just have to ask about the one world language that has, looks like one or two kids.
Oh, it just means there's one, I think, probably one section of between one and 10 kids. Yeah, sorry, the bottom side, the bottom is the number of courses we're running in that category, so I don't know what.
I think it could be an AP French class.
Yeah.
I think it may be like the end class, we want to make sure that they got that.
Got it, thank you.
So the only comment I would add is that if you looked at this chart six or eight years ago, you would see far more classes with 25 plus. So the committee has committed the resources to reduce those sections where we did have larger class sizes. I also will share that if you look at the enrollment data from 2012 to 13 to now, there are 250 to 275 less students than we had during that time. So our enrollment is declining and we, that, that was projected in NASDAQ and we'll talk about that and enrollment trends. But I will just, I thank you for your comments. I think the story behind smaller class size is a lot about making connections, about meeting the needs of our students, differentiating, and that's really important to us. So your comments were very appropriate and thank you for making those because there's a lot behind these smaller class sizes that, especially as we come out of a pandemic, that are really important in terms of making sure kids are getting what they need, making sure they're feeling connected and making sure they're feeling like we're paying attention to them.
Kathy, thank you very much. And next, Andy McGowan, who is, who oversees our MCAS administration, which is a very steep task and he's in the middle of it. At any time of the year, there's always some retest happening or the full implementation. And he does a really wonderful job of that. He's going to overview a little bit of our MCAS, AP, ACT and SAT data. And I'll jump in if I have anything to add, so.
So this is, so we have three different slides here with MCAS data and then we're going to kind of focus in on a particular subgroup. But this is the ELA banner here and if you take a look at it, ours is kind of unique. Well, all across the state is kind of unique right now because of COVID, which you can see in 2020. But just to give you a little background, 2018 was the last year that we did the legacy test, which was paper-based. 2019 was the first year we did the computer-based next generation test. And that's where ELA and math. 2022, we had a waiver to do a paper-based test that year because the state was kind of providing that as an offering and a few other things with flexible dates and that kind of thing. And, excuse me, that was 2021. And 2022, last year, was kind of the first year we did the next generation test again, similar to 2019. So the data itself is pretty similar to the state in terms of dips and rises. You can see, see that with our 2022 data there, that things went down a bit from 2021. And some feedback that, that we've, we've received from teachers just kind of going through the data too is that the paper-based test has, students just tended to do better on it. So you can see that 2018, 21, those test scores to the 2019, 2022. So just kind of keep that in mind as we go through the next chart as well. So with, with math, John, you can, math is similar. You can see 21, 22, we're pretty much in line with the state as far as kind of where the trends are. Both our math and English and science for that matter, teachers are working with their departments to go through the data. They use a lot of PLC time to digest it, to address where the shortcomings are and, and kind of provide solutions for that. So all three departments are really invested in where they can grow and where we can be more impactful with students. And John, if you can click it to bio, so, and here's our, our science data. So again, this data, this data is more consistent with 2021 compared to the other two. The biology PLC is, in particular, really goes through this. And in years past, they've found certain questions that the students haven't done well on and they go through it with a fine-tooth comb and look at, you know, how was the, how was the material presented? How is it worked in the curriculum? And kind of make adaptations to better serve our students and better prepare them for this. And that's true with math and English too. English took the PD day the other day to go through the MCAS data and they realized that there were some things that were a little different than they had originally thought. And some of the questions that were on the 22 MCAS with ELA were more challenging than, than they had anticipated. So what they're doing now is taking that 22 test and using it this year with our sophomores to prepare them as best they can for the upcoming test as they get ready for that.
So can I just jump in? The broad strokes, and Andy and I had talked about this earlier and we've been talking about it over the course of the last couple of weeks. All the scores around the state have dipped and our scores have dipped in kind of in ways that are reflective of the trend lines in, in, in the state. And what we are doing in English and in math and in science is to look at where our performance, which on every single, every single question on all three exams, if I'm correct, we've outperformed the state, which is not a surprise, but where our performance is closest to the state signals to us where our students are underperforming against that norm. And those are the questions that our teachers and their data teams and their professional learning community teams are looking at. Why are our students only overperforming the state by a small amount rather than, you know, the more, the greater norm? So that's how we unpack the data, that's what we've always ever done and that's what they've been in the middle of doing currently.
Yeah, so the next slide has a subgroup and, look, hard read, but the top graph there is a correlation with all of our students here, 2019, 21 and 22. And the bottom graph there is students who have high needs. So just to kind of, just to speak to this a bit, DESI's definition of a student with high needs is someone who's low income or formerly economically disadvantaged, an EL student or former EL student, a student with a disability. And so that's kind of what that subgroup entails, which they then can break it down even more so with that. But just for the sake of just kind of presenting this, this is all just ELA tests. So if you take a look at the graphs there, the partially meaning, which is the PM there, partially meaning expectations has increased from 21 to 22, but is similar to 2019. And in the high needs category, I think it's worth mentioning or saying again that 21 was a paper-based test. So it was a different test format than 22 and 2019. And the ELA teachers, again, you know, this is all part of their data dive when they go into it to address these students and everyone else. But, you know, they focus in on, on this stuff and this, what kind of, some of the things that they're looking at and how they can address those. And then the next slide is math. So math is similar in the sense that 21 was a paper-based test, 22 and 2019 were both computer-based. Again, the top chart there is all students, the bottom one is our high needs. So the exceeding, exceeding expectations in 22 was doubled from 2018, 2019 and 2021. So for our high need students, we exceeded by double the amount in that group. We also look at, looking at meeting expectations and partially meeting expectations, those though were down. So there were some improvements here that I think are, are interesting to look at and kind of dissect a bit with our staff with that exceeding, with this certain population and that specific one. So for students who are not passing MCAS, so that's the red bar on the right there, our math department is working with a Title I tutor and she's able to get in certain classrooms and help students, support students there. Students are also working with her after school. We have NHS students who help tutor as well. Our EL teachers here are tutoring some, their population to prepare them for a MCAS retest or to prepare them for the test in general. And our science department, which I know this is math, but our science department has put together references and resources too for our students as well as ELA. So students who are in that red category, whether it's all students or high need students, we're really dumping a lot, offering a lot of resources for them to prepare them for the test so that they can either take it for the first time or retake it and have some success on it.
Do you want to pause it at that or do we want to go through some of the other different exams?
I'm wondering as resources are coming their way and, you know, the pressure's on post-COVID to bring them around, what is also accompanying for resources for stress management? Because obviously this is one of the pinnacles of stressful activities for the students and I'm wondering how that combines, including with whatever work Mary Ellen is doing in the wellness group.
I think that our teachers are really good at reminding students to balance. And I, we see this in our EL program significantly, that's one that pops to mind first. And preparing their students for MCAS while possibly learning a new language and going through everything else. And, and our staff are really dedicated and gifted in how they do that. And it's really kind of the relationships that they're forming with the kids. You know, we have programs and like, science has an online resource that students can use a little more at their leisure as well as off after-school help and that kind of thing. And I think it's just our teachers being creative in how they, how they come at it with certain students.
I would also add that we identified three areas as a district, as areas of real strategic focus. And one of them was social-emotional learning. And Dr. Lipton O'Connor has been working with us K through 12 to identify strategies that are useful in all different arenas, but primarily in our classrooms. And a lot of our teachers are incorporating that into their goals for the year. So they're identifying multiple goals, areas to focus on, and a lot of them chose in the departments I oversee, which is two large departments. Many of those teachers are identifying social-emotional learning areas to grow in and ways to incorporate those into their lessons. So that's an area where you might see our strategic planning start to filter down and start making its way into classrooms in a really strategic and kind of deliberate kind of way. It might be hard to identify if you're walking down the hallway, it's not like a poster you can see on the wall, but it's the kind of thing the teachers are really working to, to kind of pepper into their work as, and the students might not even be where it's happening, but it's definitely happening in a lot of, a lot of ways and, and areas for many, many of our teachers.
In what degree do we message this to the community so that they're aware that, yes, we're helping our students work hard, but we're also looking for stress management resources, you know, to, to help with pressure that may be coming from home or presuming that the children should be under pressure?
You know, I don't know that we are doing, we are communicating that all that much and stress management, social-emotional learning are the same thing, of course. So I think it's probably an area we should make more about, making sure parents are aware of the things we're doing as a district and maybe as a school, but also as teacher to student, yeah.
I was just going to jump in and add that another component of this is in our professional learning offerings. And so as Sean was talking about, Dr. Lipton O'Connor and some of the things that she's doing, just in this room yesterday, we had our induction, one of our induction program workshops with our new teachers and it was on social-emotional learning and the CASL framework. And Mary Ellen Duggan was part of that and another one of our middle school teachers. So we had that at our professional development day on November 8th. There were a whole range of offerings related to everything from trauma-informed classrooms to meditation for teachers and thinking about how meditation, which was led by Janet Brown, one of our high school administrators, about both for you as a teacher, but then how do you bring that to your students? There was a mindfulness workshop, same thing, thinking about it for you as a teacher and then how you bring it to your students. There was another that was about, let's see, meditation, mindfulness, trauma-informed instruction. I'm not going to keep, I, I had another one there, but, so there was a whole range of offerings. So there was a whole range of offerings that are really helping teachers think about how they weave this into their everyday practice to build that healthy and balanced learner.
And were they drawn, was there a good draw to those courses when there are choices?
So the first course that we had to, the class-
Twenty-five plus, many sections.
They were very, very well attended.
Great.
We had to close many of them. And mindfulness, we have a local psychologist, Dr. Chris Willard, who did that, and this was the second time. He came last March also. Very well attended both times. So yes, there was a lot of-
Thank you. Kathy, Kathy Key has a question.
Do kids get the same amount of time between paper test and computer test? Like when we transition from paper to-
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, so the paper test, they technically had all day. Computer-based is the same thing. As long as they are working productively, as the instructions say.
Maybe just in case anybody in the public is wondering, can you explain how this equates to graduation? Because it's not just the green and blue.
Right.
There, yeah.
Yeah, so-
And I believe that's, the cuts are changing in next year, or could you?
Class of 2026, yeah. So the students have to pass ELA, math, and science as a requirement by the state as well as the local requirements here at District, what we said. So when a student is in a not-meeting-expectations category, so those red categories, then the state offers a retest in November and a retest in March. So we would sign those students up to take basically as many tests as we can before their senior year so that we can put them in the best position possible to graduate. Once they pass it, then they're done MCAS. There's also appeals that we've worked through with certain individuals depending on the situation. And each kid who may fall into that red category, each kid's unique in their own way. And certainly, students who are falling into a did-not-pass and has to retake, you know, we want to give them everything we can to prepare them for the test and to see them do well on it. And yes, the standards are changing for the class 26 in ELA, and they've raised the score for that.
Yeah. Can I jump?
I have two questions. The first one is, what is the schedule of the test at grade levels? Was it used to be biology in freshman year? And can we just, because any parents who are watching, it's going to be some changes. Like what grade levels, you might start getting in the tenth grade first?
So, yeah, ELA is given in March, 10th grade. Math is given in May, 10th grade. And science is, which for us, pretty much all biology, is given 9th grade in June.
Okay. And then the second question is, besides when the students graduate, they get, you know, a certificate, they complete all the courses here at Longone, but they also get a second certificate, a second grant if they pass on the MCAS test. Is that correct?
That, that I can't really speak to. As far as I know, they do get, they get their score report, which is now done both paper and electronically. Their parents can check it from the state. I don't know if they get a certificate from it. There's, go ahead.
I don't know if it's actually a certificate, but it's like, not a accreditation, something that is like another graduation thing, you know?
The competency determination. So, yeah, so if they meet the criteria that the state says for ELA, math, and science, then they will get their CD for that, which is competency determination, meaning that they've met what the state says they need to for those three subject areas in MCAS.
Okay, so follow-up to that. Seeing the trends, have you done the competency to see how the difference since 1819, 2021? Have you seen how those competency graphs would look?
Haven't looked specifically at those. They're very, they're tied directly to their scores, though. So I haven't done a data dive into that or anything.
And I, but it's correct to say that basically if they're in the yellow, green, or blue, they're all in their competency determination. So it would basically be looking at a graph of the red.
I guess that's looking at the whole graduation class as a whole. How many, out of each graduation class, the percentage of the name, every class is different.
Oh, yeah.
How many get achieved that? And are we increasing by achieving it?
Sure.
Or are they also going with it? I mean, COVID has done, hasn't done anybody any help in this system. And there's so much that we have to make up with it.
Yeah, and I guess my question would be, are you looking at that as like a senior year cohort? Or as like a-
I think the question is like, how many, let's see, percentage not achieving the competency determination.
So, yeah. Probably count on one hand.
Yes.
The students who have not met that.
Because there's multiple opportunities after this test to-
It's a small enough number that we will talk about the kids by name when we're, when the retest is coming up and saying, remember this student whose name we know is taking it and we're pulling for it. And when the data comes in, we're like, did they pass? Because we're all invested in not, you know, just the data, but that child whose name we know and whose personal experience is one where-
And I'll just add, I think the state raising expectation, that will be a different equation for us and we'll have to keep a closer eye on the number of students who might need extra support to meet that new benchmark.
Yeah. And enrolling into any student who's in their senior year who's taking retests, at this point, we're looking, connecting with the state to file appeals and to start an appeal process with that student. We'll still have them take retests because the appeal process can take time, but we're doing everything we can to see that student succeed.
Well, thanks for that. I just heard of the retest and then when we feel some of these are requesting, some would rather do a pen and pencil than do, you know, it'd be easier when you see before yourself a multiple choice. Hey, I'm not going to do square figure. I'm just going to, you know, pick A, B, C, or D. I appreciate all these, so that students do even have to achieve them. Thanks.
So just a bit of a high-level overview of our AP data. So this is, now we give many exams. I think we give maybe exams in about 27 or 28. Sometimes, you know, that number changes year to year, but it's about that. Our number of total students taking the APs has gone up. And as a reminder, our student enrollment has gone down. So the proportion of, the number of, the percentage of students taking APs is rising. So you may, you're seeing that the number of students who are taking it, the percentage of our students taking it is going up. The number of exams is also going up there mostly over the course of five years. But you will also notice that the percentage of our scores of AP, on the AP of three or greater is dipping a bit. So I think that's just a reflection of the trend lines where more kids are taking it, a greater percentage are taking it. Their success is nominally dipping, and I think that's just a reflection of what we see as and qualify as success. So I will also add that, and this is a much lengthier graph, but the colors there represent the intensity of or the amount we are overperforming the global averages on these four exams that I didn't just pick out of a hat. These are the four most populated exams, the four most popular exams that we give. And the good news and the kind of the bullet point takeaway is that on the highest number of exams we give, we are outperforming the global averages by some of the greatest extent. So in generally speaking, we, in English, that's the one that we give the most exams of. World History, English Lit, and Psychology. Not only do we give the most exams here, these are the most popular exams for us. They're the most popular exams in most schools, and our kids are doing quite well on those. And so we look at this data. If you imagine this chart goes all the way, you know, I have this for all of our exams and how many we give and how we match against not only how we've done year to year against ourselves, but also how we do against the global averages.
And the HCT data is relatively comparable. The years in this graph, chart are on the left there, and it's relatively comparable. You see 22, 23 actually went up in everything across the board. So that was noteworthy of mentioning there. And the SAT data, so the 22 information is still coming as SATs are still going on this year, but you can see that data there. The scores since 2019 are relatively consistent with the reading and writing part, portion of it. But the data for this year is still kind of coming in, so that's why those numbers are a little bit different.
That's an overview of all of our standardized tests a lot.
Excellent.
I didn't see in our attached agenda this data. Is that possible for us to have copies of, or did I miss it?
You did not miss it. We will provide it to you.
Thank you.
And me, Kathy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to share just some school-related news. I'm bringing it up into really two things and just coming at it a little bit differently here. We have some things that perennially happen around this time of year that I'm happy to tell you about. And a dramatic effect there. All right. Ms. Key, I thought you would be enjoying seeing this. This is our first Tiny Titan Holloway, Halloween Parade, which happened, of course, a few weeks ago at Halloween when our preschoolers who come here to the building every day and are taught by our Titan teachers, those are students who take early childhood education as a course. That's one of the real, just like the real gemstones of our program, this ability for our teenagers to learn early childhood education skills and then employ those in a real experience with little kids here in our building. And so this is a fun moment, but it also represents a real success in our building and, you know, really so much different than what we could provide during the pandemic. The fall concerts, we've had two of those in the last few weeks. There was a choral concert and instrumental concert. I talked a little bit about those. And we have a wonderful tradition also here of inviting veterans to speak to our students in an optional assembly. And we get many classes come down for that. And that is organized by Gina Johnson, who does it through a club that was formerly named Operation Tomahawk, but is now Operation Enduring Freedom. So those are just things that happen, generally speaking, every year, but they're worth highlighting because they are, they're ways to, you know, for our students to have experiences outside of the classroom or to enrich their classroom experience.
Is that Mr. Kalinda keeping connected to the school?
He, well, he attended last year. He was not, he did not participate in this, he did not speak at this one. Last year, he didn't. Okay. And then new and current events, we had DECA Networking Night. This was, I think, last week, if I have that correctly. And right here in the library, we had 15 guest speakers from our community. Some of them were parents, some of them were networked, you know, people who are known to us or have some connection to the school. And they spoke about their experience in their different fields. Many of them, of course, related to business. And our students get a huge amount of value out of that. It was well, well-attended and was open to not only DECA students, but to all kinds of students. And we had something north of 50 students show up for this evening event. They were all dressed in their, they're dressed better than many of us here tonight, our teenagers. So they were, had an opportunity to network with our business professionals who were kind enough to offer their time. Additionally, we had a parent speaker night, a parent speaker event last night. That was a virtual event that was on the topic of teen marijuana use. This is an event I organized with Mary Ellen Duggan and the members of Be Well Northboro. And it was, I think, grant-funded and was a virtual event. And it was okay. The attendance, I would love to have seen a little bit stronger, but we're hoping to build on that and have other programs on the topic of drug and alcohol abuse and other areas of student wellness in the future, either in person or virtual. That's a model we're trying to sort out. And then, of course, you heard, Guys and Dolls starts, opening night is tomorrow night. Goes through Saturday. Each of the shows is 7:00 p.m. And you have your tickets. Should be really terrific. And then other new and current events, mostly related to athletics here. Our Unified Basketball Jamboree was today, and that saw our A and B gym, which you've all probably been in and is enormous, filled with seven other basketball teams in addition to ours. So it was eight basketball teams of students with intellectual disabilities paired with mentor students. That is our unified model, which is built out of the Special Olympics, as you're probably aware. Was a huge success. We probably had 100 athletes from all kinds of different other schools participating. Also, we, our sports that are, some of them are still competing. In fact, this late into the tournament, our cheer team qualified for the regionals. And we had Central Mass Championships out of our girls and boys cross-country teams both, which is a huge accomplishment. That's not the kind of thing we see every year. And our girls volleyball team also won the Central Mass Championships. And as you may be aware, our girls soccer team is right now playing in the state semifinals against Wellesley in Walpole. And I feel my phone buzzing.
It's one to one.
Okay.
Six minutes to go.
Okay.
One to one, six minutes to go.
I was just going to say, I hope we're getting updates.
So if they win this game, they play on Saturday in the state final against, I think, Hingham is the only team remaining. And that would be a pretty remarkable accomplishment. I think the last time we won a state championship in girls soccer was 2009, I want to say. And so it's a terrific group of kids, and we're hoping they pull it out tonight and that we get to see them play on Saturday.
Forty-one degree, tough weather.
It's an open tournament now, too, so it's a larger field.
Yes, yeah. And I've been to several of the games in coming through here, and the teams are really, it's just a very competitive. Girls soccer has just, it's just a very competitive brand of soccer. And we're very proud of our teams. But all those teams, the cross-country teams, boys and girls are quietly, also quite, quite, quite a strong program. We're very proud of them as well.
Questions?
So I was telling Amy that I don't, I haven't been to the high school too many to see much, but I follow you guys on Instagram. And so I love watching the chorus concert. I just love the tape stuff. So if you don't get to come here to see stuff, Instagram is such a great place to like see some of the great, what's going on here. So I do appreciate whoever's taping it and posting it. It's fantastic for those of us with kids who aren't here and don't have time to get in for those.
Yeah, we, I try to encourage our eighth-grade families and other younger, other members of the community, if you want to see what the high school experience is kind of like, follow us on social media because, you know, you do get a flavor of the things that are happening, the different-
It's fantastic to watch.
Yeah.
It's really, really nice.
I will add that as goods and services and ticket prices are going up for everything, I think the high school performances remain a great value.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. That's great.
So quickly, in your packet, as of 10:21 is the enrollment data. We have 1,250. We are not seeing any great variations from month to month in enrollment as we typically don't see changes at this point in time. Also in your packet is the NESDEC Enrollment Projection Report. So this is the annual report that gives us a look forward to the next five to 10 years. I will share that over the next five years, we are projecting a bit of a stabilization of our enrollment ranging from, I would say, 1175 to 1225. We also are watching the real estate market very closely. And Algonquin is a great value for the price of the house in our communities of Northboro and Southboro and the type of education that students receive. And we are seeing that being acknowledged in many different organizations, and it is impacting people who are moving to our communities. So I anticipate that NESDEC is not factoring that in into their equation.
I think, I think a lot of, I was just saying to Kathleen that, you know, like in our neighborhoods, like we were all, we were all having kids at that time. I think that we were probably at the bubble of our kids. But we're seeing in our neighborhood, like houses sell and, you know, like, it's just like so cute, like how many little kids are there? Like the houses that are selling now, and they may not be having as many kids, but like there's, you know, probably like two, like two, four, five, like 15 or 20 kids just around. And like this summer, I had my windows open and I could hear the kids playing at like 10 o'clock at night. And it was just like the best sound to hear, you know? 10 o'clock at night, and it was just like the best sound to hear, you know? So, I do, I know our projections are going down, but I think as we start moving out, like, our neighborhoods are great neighborhoods for kids to move into, or families to come into, to have families.
So, I will share that in Boston Magazine, so Algonquin was ranked, I believe it was the 26th top high school.
I just know it was better than my former high school.
Which was great.
Which was also wonderful.
But Algonquin Regional High School, they have a category called Best Bang for Your Buck, and it was ranked number one. So, it's price value, your home value and the quality of education. So, I think that speaks highly of the district and the communities.
I was noticing, it did look like a stabilization. We've talked about the numbers dropping, but going back to Mr. Bevan's point earlier about when there are retirements or things happening, looking two, three years out, not just the immediacy of it, because, so you're not kind of like whack-a-mole with the thing. So, those projections are helpful. Thank you.
Also in your packet is the capital plan, and I will turn it over to Keith LaVoy. Capital planning subcommittee met last week to review a draft. We received some great feedback this evening. We'll present the plan to you and hopefully get your approval and vote to move this forward.
Great. Well, thank you, Greg. Let Greg mention, enclosed in your packet is a draft of the capital plan for 24 to 28. This does look familiar to you, and I'll explain some of the things that are included and slightly different. You will see a deferred list, which is in the rose-colored, and then the green, which is identified as either a new item or an item that is something that we were putting forth as a priority for FY '24. I'm also happy to report that in orange, on the top there, is Project Adventure, which has been a line on this report for many years. We're very fortunate to have secured funding to do some improvements to the Project Adventure course, and Brian Mossen, our PE teachers, and what is his title shown? Was he the department chair of?
Department Chair of Physical Education.
Physical Education and Health. And Health, yeah, correct. Gave me a progress update, and a lot of the materials are, were on backorder, but are starting to come in, and they're looking to actually take care of this project by the end of December. So, we are seeing progress with this plan, as noted by that line in orange. So, one of the pieces that I, we wanted to do based on our subcommittee meeting is to really identify those top five priorities, and I prepared a document of that that is not in your packet, that I'll present this evening, that'll go through the top five priorities that we have identified. One of the other aspects of this, and I do want to thank Mike Gorman, our Director of Facilities, who has a really good handle on not only these projects, but all the other maintenance projects included in the, in the program for, for our maintenance and improvements. So, that's key to note. The other part that's at the bottom of this chart that is in your packet is the athletic complex, which we'll be providing an update on later in the agenda, but it is included as part of our capital plan. So, before I pop over to those top five priorities, I don't know if anyone had a chance to take a peek at this, or if there were any questions that stood out before I go over the top five priorities. Okay, excellent. So, as we went through that list, we did want to have the top five stand out. I'll go right to the top, and this is one that is not new to the committee, is the redundant domestic hot water boiler. This is one that we gave a more thorough presentation on last year and really tried to move to the top of our list. We are estimating the cost of this at $215,000, which is pretty sizable. But what it will include is not only the replacement of our hot water boiler that currently exists in holding tank, but also building the redundancy of having a secondary boiler and a secondary storage tank, which we do have space for. That is certainly recommended for a building of this size and this level of use, so that if that boiler does go down, we do have the backup necessary to keep things operational versus going to more of an emergency mode if we did lose that boiler or the storage tank, you know, it would be something that we would have to move on quickly and rapidly. So, that redundancy is something that we really would like to add, and has been something we've, we've talked about before. And also kind of to note is that it is one of the major systems that we don't have redundancy for. So, that would make us whole on some of our larger systems throughout the building. Any question about that? I know we have discussed that in prior meetings, so I think we're probably pretty good on that one.
I would just say that it looks to be like, by putting this off, the cost keeps going up.
It does. And one thing we did discover last year is even over the course of the last year, from the start of the planning to when we were really starting to get moving on that, we saw a sizable increase of almost 20%. Right back, yeah, I think it was about 20% between when we started planning to when we wanted to move on it. That's why it says estimated cost.
Just the fact that we, we have from year to year, we keep seeing things get moved and deferred, and the cost keeps.
No question. And I think that's one of the nice ways of the way that this plan is designed, is you get to see that with the historical perspective and also what we're looking for as a priority in the present year upcoming. The second is also not a new addition to our plan, but is looking out front, all the way from the cafeteria to the fine arts wing, of looking to improve basically the curbing and the step between what would be considered more of our patio, which is done with pavers, and there is that granite base that kind of keeps things locked in, just through years of wear and tear, that that has, there's been a differential in many parts of that, and to make it more of a smooth transition, you know, we'd like to do that improvement. So, that would be a sizable space and lineage, you know? If you can think of the front of the building, it would go from the cafeteria all the way down around the bend to the fine arts wing. So, that's a sizable amount of lineage that would be needed to be improved for 108 estimated. And that is simply caused by New England weather. There's nothing extraordinary to that, other than normal wear and tear over the 19 years. The third is a new item. Unfortunately, in the spring of '22, the rooftop unit, which is number 10, that services the guidance department, had a leak to its coil. This is kind of unusual. We do keep up with our preventative maintenance on all of these larger units that are on top of the building, but this coil did seem to deteriorate at a quicker rate. There's nothing overly that would explain that, and fortunately, that is not the case with many of our other larger units. But as you can see, it is creeping towards what would be its life expectancy of, you know, 20 to 25 years, but it did occur kind of under that. So, this is one that has creeped up. We did attempt a repair to the coil to see how long it would keep a charge, and it got us through the summer. But we saw that, you know, even in the fall, that, that was starting to deteriorate, and we've gone to alternative methods of, of keeping the guidance office cool and comfortable during the more warmer days. So, that's why that has gone from, you know, not being on the list to being added to the list and moving to the top of one of the higher priorities. The fourth is relatively new. We do have small roof leaks in our boys locker room and as part of the boiler room. This is a section of roof that does not have solar panels on it. It is one that is a flat roof, and that membrane has, you know, seen normal, typical wear and tear. We are recommending a rather small way of repairing that, looking at the scene, looking at the different areas of it, and making sure we can get up to be, really extend its life. So, it did pop up on one of our latest roofing reports that was done by Titan Roofing back in September of '21, and that's why it also has kind of made its way towards the top of the list. If we were able to take care of it in more of a repair versus a replacement, we would extend that life and get the solid number of years that we would want to out of a roof that size. So, the pictures do detail. You can see where there is some ponding in the bottom right. It's not really visible here, but you will see some ballooning of the membrane where that has occurred, and that was on a very hot day, so that balloon tends to get a little bigger with the air pressure that's, that's underneath it. These are not catastrophic leaks. They do not hinder the usage of the spaces at all. They're ones that we just, every time we get a rain like we did last night, we got to come in and take a look and make sure that we don't have any, you know, further problems or damage. So, that is the fourth. And the fifth and final is also relatively new to the list. It is a, to repair the connections, the vaultaic connections for our main boiler heater. Also typical of wear and tear, these fittings don't last forever, and because it does support our water system and our glycol system, it is something we've got to keep a very close eye on. But because of just the size of it, and you can kind of get, gather that from, from the image, this is not a small little, it's not like your regular faucet connection that we'd be replacing here. The fittings are quite expansive and quite large. So, to do that, you know, we want to make sure we're doing it well, and that is coming in at an estimated cost of just over $50,000. So, those are the top five. I'd certainly be happy to give more detail as best I can, but huge thank you to Mike and his team, you know, for helping me put this together for tonight and kind of to give you, you know, that list on the page that was shared, everyone can be quite long and quite expansive, but this is the top five priorities that we've decided as putting forth to the committee this evening.
Questions from the committee?
Paul? I'm trying to match the numbers for the outside accent borders. You said it was 108K?
Yes.
To the spreadsheet?
Yeah.
I just don't see.
So, to do it all together, we could do that in sections, is what we've kind of proposed. Paul's like to do, you know, from the calf to, or the, we can do it in different sections, and that would be like the 64, and then the carry it the whole way through would get us to over about 100. Which we could do, you know, a couple of years down the road. That's why it's shared in this way here. Kevin?
You said for the key, the rose-colored is a deferred list?
Yes.
And the orange is underway. What does the green represent?
Either new or a priority.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask about the iWash? How did it go from $6,000 to $160,000?
Yeah, the number of stations, just a way of kind of, and that's why the historical isn't helpful, because, you know, looking at it through a different way, we do have a flushing system now that we are keeping these as viable options in our science classrooms. But, you know, when you look, do this, yeah, you can do one or two at a time, but when you're collecting that over the course of, you know, the, just, that's a pure division problem, or multiplication problem of the number of classrooms and looking at it over a period of time.
Identifying a couple versus all.
Correct. And a way of kind of spreading it out versus doing it in all one big bulk.
And that's an example, sorry, can I interject? When I met with Mr. Gorman about, about that, the iWash stations are more of a priority. Of course, iWash stations are important to have and operating perfectly at all times, but in chemistry, they're more important than, let's say, in physics. So, being mindful about where we're starting that work is going to be important.
I feel like that's been on here for a long time.
It has.
Like, every year, and I believe we defer it a lot.
And that's why it's in the rose.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I recall, Mike said they have some system in place now where they're flushing it.
Yeah, they're, they're doing a lot of flushing, and that does seem to be keeping things the way we'd like to without the sediment in the systems that would block them and make them inoperable. So, we are doing a flushing program that is allowing them to remain, you know, in good working order. But still, it'd be one of those, it would be good to replace.
Yeah.
And that's why I think it lands on a deferred list.
Well, I get it, but I feel like every single year it's on a, like, we've been deferring it.
She's saying, like, oh, let's skip this.
Year after year.
One of the things we talked about at the capital planning subcommittee was being strategic about it, so maybe not doing all of them, but to your point, Sean, looking at maybe every fourth classroom so that there, there are flushing stations available that are in good order that would suffice for our programming and keeping kids safe.
And then as far as like our budget for this, so is this part of getting a capital part, you mean, like, trying to go to a stabilization?
Stabilization fund, yeah. Yeah, so I think this is, I think we created our stabilization policy last year. I think that was something that the Southborough, the town of Southborough asked us to do for, for them to consider us to create a stabilization fund. The request this evening is, or our conversation this evening is really around, what would you like us to move forward as capital projects? And that would allow us to prepare the article language to get to the town and engage in conversations with the town's capital committees. The five that keep presented are the five that we're recommending.
Yeah. Which would represent the top five here that are on the spreadsheet?
So, we move those forward each as an individual article in both towns?
Correct. Yep.
Northborough's already created the stabilization.
Northborough had already voted at the town, town meeting, so we just have to wait for Southborough to approve it.
Right.
The, the other component that I think really is important to mention is the athletic complex, which is not on, we didn't talk about it. So, that is the number one priority in terms of moving a capital project forward, but these are in addition to.
Did you say we're going to have an article for each of them?
Correct.
Each one of the five or total, like, all five together?
So, that's in, that's in addition to the stabilization fund approval, correct, for Southborough. So, in other words, they would be basically individual capital items, like we see for each town each year for a variety of different departments. These are going to be potentially Algonquin's requests.
Kathleen?
I'm pleased to see the energy savings initiatives, and yet they're not, I guess, pushed out to 25, and those are all new initiatives, including a really great one, I would think, would be the water fountain replacement program, so that kids are using canteens and not plastic bottles. Are, are plastic water bottles sold here?
They are available, I think, but what we're finding here, and this is across the board, a lot of students are bringing refillable, right there, and we do have those throughout, throughout the, there you go. We do have those throughout the building, so they are being used far more than we are seeing disposable.
So, what is the expense for the water fountain?
It would be an enhanced filtration system.
I see.
That would do it versus just what we get through the regular filtering of a water bubbler. There's a lot of enhanced technology there that can be utilized through some energy conservation and water conservation as well.
Right. I think that's always the right, right pony to bet on.
That's right.
I think we need motion, or emotion.
Well, I guess I was just going to make a quick comment on the water fountains. The water that is in the bubblers is safe and it has.
Hundred percent, and filtered.
And filtered.
I did, I did mention that, yeah. Yes, it is. And used. I have, when I've been on, in, in the building, I do see, do see still students using the gooseneck fill stations that are throughout the building with regularity.
Gooseneck fill stations?
Yeah, so what you'll see is a regular bubbler, and one side has been converted into a gooseneck where it's been added, so it's just enough, it provides enough space so that you could get.
I see, so you're not tipping it.
That's correct.
Okay.
And they're not as sleek-looking as what you might see as a, replaced at the gym that has like a digital counter on how many plastic bottles. It's a simple retrofit with a gooseneck. It's pretty simple and works really well.
Should have had a photo of that.
Gets a lot of usage.
It's how we get.
There's one.
Get the bang for the buck.
Yes, and they get a lot of usage.
You have to measure your own ounces.
Exactly.
It's analog.
Can I just make a comment to, Paul, to your question around, you know, packaging these into one capital, larger capital project? I think the capital planning subcommittee did have that conversation and made a recommendation to separate each of these for the purpose of, again, there's a large capital project on plan, and that is the athletic complex. Potentially, this, the thought was this would allow potentially a capital project or two in addition to the complex to be considered.
That's right. I think there was also some thought that it might help Southborough see the light about the capital stabilization fund, you know, so we don't have to come back every year with six or seven articles.
We need a motion?
How do we want, does, we need a motion for each individual item?
I think a motion to approve the capital plan for. I think a motion to approve the capital plan for FY24 through FY28 and to move the five top priorities forward as capital.
Some move.
By Chris, because you know. Second by Joan. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. That passes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll turn it over to Becky who will give the FY23 monthly general fund expenditure report and an update on the FY23 statement of revenue.
So over the past month, the finance team has worked again. We've continued that work to encumber any known FY23 expenses. As of October 31st, we did have $715,428 or 2.78% remaining on the bottom line. We're trending fairly close to where we were last year where we had 3.28% remaining on the bottom line. And at this point, I really have no concerns to report to the committee on the operational. Any questions?
Questions?
Motion to accept until audited?
Some move?
Paul, second by Kathleen.
Appreciate the confidence.
All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Motion passes. So statement of revenue?
You will notice that we have added a column to the revenue report for this month. And that is for the revised revenue projections that we have for FY23. The two areas where we have revised our projections are with the assessments to the two towns, which the committee had voted at the September meeting to accept those revised assessments. And then also, we have received our circuit breaker figures finally from the state. And that was for the special education tuition and also for the special education transportation. You'll, this is the first year actually that we've received the transportation. We did not receive any circuit breaker reimbursement for that at the region last year. So that is 75% of our eligible costs from FY22. And that figure was $19,233. So it's small, but at least it's a glimmer of hope that we have received something. And both of those figures are 75% of our actual expenses for FY22. And if there are any questions on the revenue report?
Motion to approve until audited?
Some move?
Paul, second. Kathleen? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Okay, passes.
So also in your packet is the FY24 budget priorities. And at the October meeting, the committee did request adding some language around the athletic complex as a priority. So I took, I drafted some language and I added it to number five under finance and operations to support teaching and learning. And although it's a capital project, I think having it in there just signals that the committee is committed to moving this forward.
Questions?
Motion to accept our budget priorities for 2024?
Some move?
Chris, second?
Second.
Joan? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Okay, motion passes. Ananamous preliminary budget discussion.
So I did provide you with a handout this evening. And that is the very exciting FY24 enrollment and budget analysis. Becky and I have spent some time looking at our enrollment percentages for Northborough and Southborough, looking at how it would impact assessments. And we've done some initial calculations. As we move through this budget process, assessments and enrollments are a key factor in terms of how each town will be impacted by the budget process. Currently, we are projecting that the assessments to each community will be about 5% with a variety of assumptions. The first assumption is that there will be a 4.5% increase over fiscal year '23, that we'll receive no additional Chapter 70 state aid, that we will continue to see impacts of inflationary costs to goods and services and materials. And we are anticipating that our health insurance costs will increase between 7 and 10%. This was based on a preliminary conversation with our healthcare consultant. We are also in a collective bargaining year, so that is an unknown variable. So that is something that we are trying to factor in. And lastly, as we spoke about earlier, we are seeing an increase in out of district special education costs as a result of inflation. And that 14% is about $170,000. So our projections are just that, projections as we get more data. We'll develop a fine tune these, but this is a starting point. We will begin meeting with the towns and sharing this information back tomorrow morning. We have our first meeting with the town of Southborough to talk about the fiscal year '24 and what we're expecting. It's a great opportunity for us to share information and plan as we move forward in the budget process.
Questions, Kathleen?
I have a question. You said the out of district special ed costs are as a result of inflation?
Yeah, so the operational services division has increased out of district placement cost, private school cost by 14%.
Because I know that Westborough is struggling, almost a million dollars that they were trying to have to create. And I think it was $600,000 for just a couple of students. So, yeah, I'm wondering, is there a trend? I guess it's not here. They just happen to be attracting people with perhaps severe special needs.
Correct. And I think depending on enrollment of, you know, students, you could see students who move into your district that require specialized services that could range between $250,000 to $350,000.
Sure. The child that goes to Perkins or?
Correct. And we have an educational and fiscal responsibility for those students. So I know Westborough experienced a couple of movements that impacted their budget significantly. And they did have to go back to the town and ask for additional money. And I think it was a million dollars more than they had anticipated. We're not in that situation at this point in time. And we're early process of the budget, developing the budget. Principal Bevan and his team submitted their budget request to the finance team on October 31st. Becky and her team has been busy aggregating all of those line items. And actually tomorrow, we'll be looking at the first initial preliminary budget run with the leadership team in preparation to bring it back to the operational budget subcommittee, I believe on Monday, for the first conversation that we'll have around the budget. So much more information to follow as we move forward.
Athletic complex.
Yes, so I'll turn it over to Keith Boy who will give an update on the athletic complex.
Thank you, Greg. Yes, and unfortunately, I do have another short presentation for you guys. This one has pictures, so I think you'll be excited to see.
We should almost be like this. Not like this. Or like a, like, you know what I mean?
Greg tries to filter you through all the hot seats.
It's been instructional practice where you're moving.
Well, I do thank you for your patience with this. And some of this is a little bit of a review of what we are and what we're embarking on, but also an update on what we've done. It has been a very busy month behind the scenes. A lot of work has been done to get us to a good point of understanding the scope and breadth of the project, getting to a 90% cost estimate in our work with Gale Associates. And then what this update will also do is give a little more in-depth view of the current conditions to make sure that we're 100% transparent about why we are embarking on this. So we'll get started. Certainly, the master plan of the project has not changed. We are still looking to replace the track, replace the stadium field with a turf surface, replace the grandstands and lights, install a multipurpose field with turf surface, which is also known as the JV field. Also replacing the tennis courts and installing an amphitheater is all still part of our master plan. Certainly, an overview of the project and why we are doing so. Many of the things that are existing that we're looking to replace are either part of a 1994, 2004 renovation to the facility and are ending their life expectancy or in our needing of replacement or significant repair. To kind of highlight that, I wanted to kind of show, give a little slideshow of where we are with some of these so that you can get a better, a little better image. Some of the images we've sewn so far hasn't really done it justice. So you'll see this, this is of our tennis courts. You will see the San Andreas Fault going through the middle there. But you'll see about a quarter or a third of the way up the photograph where there was been a patch put in to help to keep the end line or the baseline of the tennis, of this particular tennis court intact. That's the type of repairing that has been done to help make it still functional and usable. And this is the track. This is probably a good angle. You can see some puddling that is about halfway up the image, but certainly discoloration. That isn't just for effect. That is uneven surfaces throughout the track. And it's different layers of patching that has occurred over the years. And this is one of the near to the school straightaway that is obviously in need of repair and resurfacing. The next is a similar exposure, just a little farther, farther back. It just shows the condition of the track. I don't think that has ever been something that has been in question. But certainly, the track has not, was not part of the 2004 renovation and does need to be go down to just a simple resurfacing. But the entire base layer needs to be replaced for the track in order for it to be serviceable and safe. The other item we wanted to highlight is the lighting, the lighting that we currently have, especially in night conditions. Yes, it looks beautiful on this blue gorgeous day. But certainly, with evening events, there are blind spots for the lighting itself and places the light is shining across it inaccurately. So one of the real enhancements of the project that we're proposing is some LED lighting that is much safer for all types of competitions. You know, not only just for football, but for lacrosse, which is obviously a smaller ball. And having good lighting is imperative for safe competition. So that is one of the safety enhancements that we want to make sure are exposed with this project. The image here is for ADA compliance. So you'll see, and it's kind of hard to see, I'm sorry the shadows aren't great, but maybe my cursor will help. But you'll see that at both ends of the grandstand, these are steps. And what we would be doing with the project is adding ramping to both sides to be in full ADA compliance so that, you know, members of our community that near, have wheelchairs or are not as mobile would have the ability to join the community for different types of events. So these would be ramping systems that would be at both ends of the new grandstand. And lastly, one of the pieces that happens just with any type of brass service, and I may, you have experiences with your own yard, is that over years and over times of use is that the area becomes compacted. So to really make sure that it is a safe surface that drains well, you know, that's why we were looking towards replacing the stadium field with a turf or synthetic surface. So not only the compacted nature of it, but the next slide shows some of the drainage issues that occurs. This is some puddling that is obviously visible that would be on the playing surface that would be eradicated with a new turf surface, which is an obviously benefit of having the synthetic versus the natural grass. So those are such as some greater images. We have gone, used in prior presentations, the thumbnails, but we thought that this would be a better way of representing the current conditions of, for the project. Now to get to the good stuff. In the last update that Greg provided, we did have a bunch of different tasks that were completed. Looking ahead to November of '22 for this update, these are things that have happened in the last few weeks, which is pretty exciting. We have made some progress towards our goals. We will present the project to the Southborough CPC. That was a few weeks ago. We did conduct that in open meeting. We reviewed the project details in greater detail with the regional subcommittee for capital projects. That was part of the plan that you just approved, which was greatly appreciated. Gale Associates has been our hired consultant for the project. They have been active in working with the town of Northborough to get the necessary permitting. And many of those applications are near completion. We've gotten to that point. They have also provided an estimated a 90% cost estimate, which Becky will review in a slide ahead, which really helps us get us closer to fine tuning the number that we would be ultimately be looking towards getting approved through town meeting or other methods of funding, which we'll talk about a little bit more. The other thing that we haven't come to a firm number on yet, and we are pushing, Gale and their engineering firm, which is called S3, is really looking at the amenities buildings. One of the things we have discussed in prior meetings is once we touch the grandstand, we have to have ADA compliance in all aspects of the facility, and that being restrooms. So it was quick to identify that we didn't have the necessary number of female bathrooms. And we were short by one for the male. So we are looking at the concurrent amenities building, the McDonald's house, as it was also called, to see what can be done with that already existing space to meet the basic needs for ADA compliance. So that has been something that we are working on actively. And we hope to have something to review more firmly, what Greg, about a week or two, I'd say is what we're hoping for. The other thing that we're working on with Gale is not only the permitting, but the bid preparation. We are hoping to do that right after the first of the year. Once permitting has been set, you know, we can really fine tune the documents for bid even prior to the town meeting so that we, you know, we will have everything in hand and everything done through proper procurement prior to the town meetings of both Northborough and Southborough. And the fun part, the publicizing of this, we hope to gain ground tomorrow night. We are having the full building committee meet virtually tomorrow night to discuss what the progress we've made, similar to what we're reviewing here, but also talk about a real marketing plan to get the word out to the community about what we're trying to achieve and what we're trying to do in short order. So some of the things we've heard so far is, oh, that's not going to happen for three to five years or, you know, everything's fine and we don't have to worry about it. So we really want to make sure that our marketing plan around this is clear and transparent and something that everyone can get behind. So that's something we're going to get in more detail with the committee tomorrow night. So I'll stop there. Are there any questions about what we've been up to? Yeah, Kathleen?
I'd like to ask if the senior center, if there will be a presentation for the senior center?
That's one of the things we're probably going to grapple with tomorrow night is what are the meetings we have to have? More formally, we tried to set meetings with the town committees that would be responsible, whether it's the select board or the finance committees in each community to get before them. And we do have a scheduled date with Southborough later in December, which is great. But we are systematically, we're getting those done. And then the outreach, like you've mentioned, whether it is seniors or youth sports who are working with our boosters is certainly going to be part of that marketing plan. And community events for neighbors, you know, to come and look at the scope and breadth of our project. So we're trying to look at it through as many different ways as we can.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions?
How did Apple Fest and Heritage Day go? Was there much interest from people who were walking by at all?
I spent quite some time there. And it was really much more helpful for me to have a better understanding. I got to understand about how rentals of our space are not happening or events cannot be held here because the property does not convey, the safety that's required does not have all of those elements. And so I spent about a half an hour there and I thought it was really helpful. I don't know how many other people went, but that was important for me.
Just curious if there's any like feedback from citizens?
Yeah, I mean, I spent some time in both Apple Fest and Heritage Day and the feedback was overwhelmingly positive, I would say. Although there was confusion, as Keith alluded to, some people thought, well, I thought we already funded this or why do we need this for it? I know, but mainly people were behind it, I would say, you know, overwhelmingly.
Well, I know like Lori Borden brought this up like, how many years ago?
Right.
12. You know, like she tried to get the ball rolling for that.
Here we are.
There we are.
Anything else?
So looking towards the next step, and some of these are going to be happening quite quickly in the next few weeks, is getting before the Northborough CPC. We actually have a date for that, December 1st. We will be presenting our proposal to the CPC. We will be presenting our proposal to the CPC of Northborough then. Certainly looking for the, the budget priorities. I, I let Greg mention just recently that, you know, adding the project to our budget priorities will certainly send a message, which, which was great to get that approved. And then working with Gail to a hundred percent design cost estimate is a huge step, really getting a firm idea of what the numbers will be and then supporting the permit process, which we've already mentioned. One of the things you're going to see in the next slide is looking at the actual draft article language that will be before town meeting, taking a look at that, which will be next, on the next slide. And have a programming meeting. Gail would really like to sit down with the Mike Masserino as well as the coaches to make sure we got the details correct of what they, you know, would like to see. Obviously, we don't want to just add things frivolously, but certainly Gail has done this a, a long time and making sure we are capturing all the things we'd like to do to really enhance the facility the way that they would like to see happen. So that will be a meeting that will happen probably in January or maybe late December, depending on scheduling, to really get through those miscellaneous items. So that's what's next. And now the fun part, article language. Becky, all yours.
So this article language was drafted by our bond council to make sure that we are in compliance. So when the, when we have to go out to bond, you will notice that they have outlined all of the components of this project, including the fact that we will ensure compliance with the ADA requirements, as Keith had mentioned. And so this would be the language that we would propose to submit to both communities for the annual town meeting vote. We have left the amount blank for right now until we do come up with some more finalized numbers. Right now, we're at the 90%. Hopefully, once we get closer to the 100% and certainly once we go out to bid, we will have firm numbers, but we can get this language on the town meeting warrants for now.
Any questions about the language?
Do we need the word indebtedness?
I love that word.
Since the bond council did draft this, I am going to guess that we do, but I can check.
Sounds so bad.
Paul Desmond doesn't like the word. He raised it on the second floor. I knew it would be a synonym of that.
I don't think you need anything, you just cross it out and it doesn't change anything.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I believe it's to allow us to go out to borrow. So that's what the indebtedness means, but I can check with him.
So in terms of the article language, providing the town with the language, Southborough is requiring all money articles be submitted by November 21st, which is Monday.
So yes, I need it.
I notice that was mentioned, it's not, it's not in the article language, it's in the amenities building. But could it be taken care of by including the not limited here? Could that be added?
It's interesting. So it would be a separate warrant article? Because it's a construction project.
It's a building.
Want to explain that?
Sure.
Want to try to explain that?
I can try to, so mass general law, if it has four walls, or if it has walls and a roof, then it's considered a building project. The athletic complex, since it's outside, is a public works project, so they fall under different statutes in mass general law and would have to go out through a separate bid process.
Even though the building, or you're mentioning the building that is already there?
Yes.
It would be demolishing and rebuilding.
Either way, anytime you touch a, a wall or do any sort of a project in a building, it does not matter.
So there will be a separate warrant?
That's correct.
Okay. We're not demolishing or renovating.
Renovating.
What about the snack shack? Are we touching that?
It possibly will be, if, if all goes well with looking at the engineering of the amenities building, which we're hoping for, is that the current snack shack could be utilized for storage with some more minor renovation.
And then the, there's sessions. That will be everything?
Amenities.
That could be everything, bathrooms and snack shack included.
With lighting, because there's no lighting.
With better lighting. Yes. And also, you know, food preparation enhancements, all the things that would make a snack shack complete, it would include in, as well as the ADA compliance of that.
Okay.
Building and space, so, yes, it would.
Is it required that we vote on this now, so for the 21st, or?
No, we just wanted to bring it, you know, have it viewed by you before we provide it to.
Any other questions?
Really looking forward to the energy market presentation next.
Yes. Or do you want to, do you want to talk about the finances of where we are now or no? I mean, this is the sticker shock.
So this is just a breakdown of the, the actual project and the different buckets that it falls into. So the first would be general conditions and that's any type of insurance related to the project as well as costs related to the project manager. And that is about $400,000. Then all of the site work, demolition, not of the amenities building.
Yes.
Anything that has to be done is about $384,000. And then the track and the football field, as you can imagine, that is the largest piece of this project and that is just over $3 million. The tennis courts are $565,000. And then the multipurpose field, which is the current JV field, and that would be the replacement of turf as well, and that is 1.8 million. So they, it does sub total to 6.2. They've built in a 20% contingency on that, so we are looking at a project of just over $7.5 million right now. And the way that this would break down, if you want to go to the next slide, for the two communities, so Northborough's portion would be 62.33% or $4.7 million and Southborough's is 37.67% for $2.8 million. And as Keith had alluded to, we have been in conversations with the CPCs in both communities and so that funding, all, all, this is the total project, so depending on what we are approved for at the CPC level, it could be reduced.
Questions?
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Now the Riveting Energy?
Yeah, so Constellation will be really quick. So we, the district did have a three-year rate lock on energy, which expired at the end of November. So we were paying .093.
Three, seven.
Three, seven. So the timing couldn't have been worse in terms of the contract expiring. So we worked with a third-party constellation and we actually locked in a new fixed rate for the next three years, which is .151, which is an increased cost. As a result of that new rate, our electricity costs for this fiscal year 23 went up about $107,000 from what we were anticipating. And we will see that it will affect the fiscal year 24 electricity costs moving forward. With a three-year rate lock, we can blend and extend. So if the right, the prices drop, we can renegotiate and get a better price for energy costs. But given the current energy market, we thought it was important to lock in a rate before they increase more than they have already. And that's the exciting update.
I, I was looking at the.
Forecast.
The forecast, yeah. I thought you were going to do some meteorology.
I know, it was like snow days was happening.
I gave you the, a bridge version. I went right to that, the point.
Any other questions for the superintendent or principal of that? So moving on to old business, vacancy update. We did receive one letter of interest, very detailed, and it looks like a very good candidate who is unable to be here tonight. So we, we're setting up for that individual to come on the December meeting for the committee to review and, and make a decision at that time and meet the candidate.
Is this the Southborough replacement for Paul?
Correct.
The Southborough?
Yeah.
And we'll have the process in place. I think we all can meet and talk to the individual, but then Southborough members do the official vote.
So in the superintendent's memo, we'll review the process and make sure it's, there's clarity around who gets to vote.
Sure.
Who gets to ask questions.
I already know I can't be here. How, so how many of us? There's only four left.
Oh, when, when is it?
I think.
December 21st.
I don't think you need a quorum of the Southborough.
She's not here either. There's a quorum.
You need a quorum of the committee.
Not just Southborough.
Not just Southborough.
And Matthew too.
Well, he's not here to ask. Okay.
Not a lot of responsibility.
We'll send you all of our questions.
I think past practice has been that although the seat is in Northborough, uh, Southborough, that the entire committee gets a voice and it's been past practice that the entire committee gets to vote. Symbolic.
Still a lot of responsibility.
Are we still taking other letters of interest or is it?
That has closed.
It's closed, okay.
Coalition for activity.
So I'll just offer a brief update on the coalition. And I'll start away from the coalition and work toward the coalition. So as you may recall, in the spring of last year, local author Jennifer DeLeon worked with the ninth grade here at Elgunkwin. All of the ninth graders read her book, Don't Ask Me Where I'm From, and she came into an assembly. And then we also, sponsored by the coalition, had an evening event that featured Jennifer DeLeon. And it was both a opportunity for her to tell her story, for us to highlight and give away some copies of her book, but it was also the launch of Storybridge. And Storybridge, Jennifer and her husband Adam Stumacher, who is also an educator, co-founded this and they invited at these events, people to apply to become part of this project. And we had our showcase event in October, the 20th, I think it was, here at the Black Box Theater. And it featured 10 community members who have worked with Adam and Jennifer since the spring on workshopping and developing their stories and, and stories of all kinds. And it was a fantastic event. It featured some of our students from Elgunkwin, we're among the 10, parents of students, various community members. And really was an event that brought together the community to hear stories and to be part of kind of our work of, the, the work of, of, that our stories are part of our journey and our identity and part of what brings us together as an inclusive and welcoming community. So it was a great event. It was sponsored by the coalition and by the school system. And Adam then also offered a PD at our PD day on storytelling in the classroom. And so that followed on this and some of our Elgunkwin teachers were at that PD, very excited about it. And I know at least one of them, the very next day was engaging students and using the strategies that Adam was teaching around developing their stories and telling their stories as a way to build that inclusive environment in the classroom. So a thread that is woven through in many different aspects that is a coalition-related activity. And we actually met and debriefed today about that event and thinking Adam and Jennifer's vision is that this is an annual event. They have young children in the Southborough system and they said, you know, their hope is that when we think of our kindergartners, that they get to see 10 to 12 stories every year at this annual event and kind of grow our community. So, so that's the big highlight. And then we had our first coalition meeting for the year and have another one coming up in December and we'll continue to sort of talk about what our work is for this year.
Kathy? Stephanie, was it filmed by the cable route to see?
It was filmed. I, I don't know that it was by cable. One of our students actually was behind the camera. And we also have photographs and we do have video released, so that was one of the things that we debriefed today. And so we're planning to share it for a, a period of time. We're sort of still working on the details.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, in the last school committee update that I sent out, there's a link that, to the video, so you should be able to access it.
Excellent. Cause I knew I wasn't able to go that night.
It was, it was powerful. I highly recommend, you know, 10 stories and a bit, very different stories. Clearly, a lot of it had gone in incredibly courageous. Yeah, I think a lot of us.
I'll reset the link.
Yeah.
Thank you. Kathy?
I was there, in the audience. I was not a presenter. I do not have a good story. But, so first of all, I'm a fan of the moth. So if any, you know, any people who enjoy the moth, it, and I just happened to be in a situation where I was like, okay, I really can't stay, I, I'm just going to stay for a couple and then I'll sneak out because I really have a lot of stuff to do. And I stayed for the whole entire thing because it was so, I mean, every story was so interesting and so mind-opening that you, and every single one of them, I learned something really, really valuable, like really, especially something that I had never understood before, not even never even questioned. I questioned it all, but I'd never understood it. And so these stories brought it, you know, just brought sort of understanding to a lot of, you know, just things that I'm not normally exposed to. So I highly recommend it. If you can get the link to work, I, you know, and you said we were going to have it just for a short time? I mean, I thought it was so valuable. I don't, I, I mean, I know it's kind of, but it was, I don't know, I think it's something that I wish all of our students could see. And parents. And staff. And everybody watching.
All right. Thank you. Policy, development or distribution, not yet. Committee did meet last night and we've got more coming. Our second time for a public comment. Okay. And at this time, personnel distribution.
So just one, Teresa, quick, quick, just retirement. So we'll have an opportunity to celebrate her great work in our district in June. And just a comment on two of the resignations. So the technology sector of, the technology department continues to struggle to keep highly qualified staff because there are so many opportunities out there for people to be recruited and seek other opportunities. So Patrick Cilio and Dan Strickland, Pat found work with a college, so he took a promotion with a college. And Dan Strickland also, I think, had some other opportunities that he's pursuing. So the technology department has interviewed other candidates and I believe we have at least one really highly qualified candidate that we're moving forward and some promising candidates that hopefully will be able to fill the positions in the next month or so.
Those are two that were here at our meeting last year?
No.
No, okay.
Is Dan Strickland still going to be the robotics coach?
Yes.
So he's also, so robotics, and I believe he's also doing the student.
He's, yes, he's completing the first semester of the student SWAT program. The acronym escapes me. But he works with five students who are enrolled in that as a class and, and he still works with them.
Thanks. Communications, there were a couple of emails that came in. One of Porta Potties, which was referred to.
Yes, it was referred to. Yes, I had a follow-up with a community member and answered all the questions and the issue has been, you know, resolved, but I think it is something that we're looking at, certainly with the ren- but I think it is something that we're looking at, certainly with the renovation of, of the facility would help in, in this area. But just also working with any, any user group that rents our facilities, making sure that we are identifying the things that they'll need, and, and them identifying what they'll need for the amount of people that will be coming was a, was an outcome of that conversation. So, I have more work, I have to talk to Principal Bevan about, and certainly Mike Gorman as well, but nothing, nothing major from that.
And the other one, took a lot, it was a lot of learning for me to understand the, the topic, and it's kind of stems out of the conversation of our last meeting about co-curricular activities and the challenges students have. We saw a little bit of that tonight with competing demands between STEM activities and fine arts, and the challenges that presents for students to enroll in both, or, or partake in after-school co-curricular, not extracurricular activities. And that was referred to the superintendent, and I know they've had follow-up conversations on those challenges, too.
Yeah, that's everywhere, too, that's not just here.
Yeah. The learning I undertook, yes.
It's really hard.
One of the comments from email was the unintended outcomes of a later start time, that it reduced the amount of time after school when sports began. That time, there used to be a gap where co-curricular activities would take place, that time has...
Shortened.
And now we're having to try to find other alternative ways to create those opportunities for kids.
So, just wondering, because you guys have a new schedule, but, you know, at some other schools, and I know Chris, at your school, do you have like a win block or an activity period, things like that? Do we, we don't have that here, I take it?
We do not, we are looking at the schedule and seeing how it's performing, and the data is starting to come in, and, and we're looking at that very closely, and one of the things we've talked about is, could we find some efficiencies in the schedule? Current schedule is performing, is delivering some efficiencies that would allow us to overshoot the nine ninety and maybe reincorporate some time back into the day that would maybe be used as a win block. Stands for what I need for some, in some schools, if you're not aware, yeah.
My school is exploring the same thing, because we're running into the same issue, we don't have a later start time, but things are always running into athletics, things are running into, you know, with all these other co-curricular type activities. I guess my question would be, how close are we to here, to nine ninety? Are we like right at the, are we right at the nine ninety hours, or is there, are we at a thousand, or not a thousand, we have like a lot of hours?
I can tell you to the minute, because I've been looking at it very closely, this year we will finish at nine hundred and ninety-two hours and fifty-five minutes. So we're looking at in the second semester, how to maybe redistribute those three, two hours and fifty-five minutes in a way that will benefit kids, and adults as well. And as we're building the schedule for next year, looking at if those same efficiencies might, might be able to amplify those in some ways for next year's schedule, it's potentially a way to, to do something innovative to help everyone. So, yeah, we're at nine ninety-two, almost nine ninety-three this year, and we're looking at, that's a, definitely an area to look at for next year.
Yes, with the two schools that I've worked at, yeah, it's, it was called activity period. Where I am now is called win, what I need now, and so students go for tutoring, or they might go to band, so they can do some rehearsals, or what have you, but, and this, we, we have it every day, but I don't think it has to be every day either. But it's just another way to get the kids more involved, and something that they wanna be involved in.
So, I think I had talked to Sean a little bit, like my sister is a teacher down in Arkansas, and like their last period is something similar to that, where if kids play sports or something, they have that period to go do, you know, their, either their sports, or they have to do their extra activity, like whatever they need to do in that last period is what, you know, it works for, you know, most of the kids for all their classes and stuff. So it just gives them that flexibility to do those extra things without it interfering.
So, those, those were the two communications, and there was, it goes in conjunction with a lot of conversations that were already happening, and spurred a lot more, I guess, so appreciate those. Items for next month, we have the science department for preliminary budget and interview. Any other action items, or anything you'd like on the agenda? Looks like, no, oh, Joan.
Do we have to vote the budget priorities?
Yes.
Do we vote them? We do, okay.
Yeah, because you did the motion, and we said so.
And Chris?
Right.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, just wanted to make sure. What about the final language on the athletic complex? Or the warrant articles?
I don't think we need a vote for that.
We want, okay.
We will at some point, but not for this particular time.
Okay.
And as a reminder, so we don't have one very long meeting, we're gonna have, the combined meeting is January seventh, I believe? December seventh?
So, just a change of location, so December seventh, which is the Northborough Wednesday meeting, we're going to have the combined meeting here. And the Northborough meeting will also be held here. Potential people coming for the calendar conversation, so this seems to be the best space for it.
Is that five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
And then we get to leave.
Come back on December twenty-fourth.
Uh, any, anything else?
It may be interesting for everyone to know that our girls soccer team has defeated Wellesley High School. In overtime, it sounds like they scored a tying goal in the seventieth minute, one to one, and then scored the winning goal in overtime by Gabby Miranda, who's one of our wonderful players. So they play on, on Saturday.
Commit to, is she Boston University?
No, I wanna say Liberty, Liberty?
Liberty.
Liberty, I think, yeah. Uh, we have, I think Mia Lockhead is committed to BC, if I have that correct.
Do you know where the game on Saturday is?
I think it's also at one o'clock, but also at Wallpole, which is where they played tonight. I think they would be playing Hingham, who I think is last year's state champion. Very good team.
Congratulations to them.
I'm very proud of them.
So, we need to go to an executive session, and you would think I'd know this by now, so we don't adjourn?
No, but we have to roll call into executive.
Roll call, into, thank you, okay, so a roll call vote to...
Well, hold on, we gotta read it. I move to move to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intent to return to open meeting.
Second.
Moved by Kathleen, second moved by Joan, all in favor, by roll call vote. Chris? Joan?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sean, yes, motion.
Thank you, Amelia, for coming, it's a long night.